I got then a different camera to work. That lighting is terrible. Okay, so we'll call to order the October 28th meeting of the Village of Cold Spring Planning Board. Do we have any reports from members?
None for me.
Okay, we have member Hawkins, Sue Myers and Laura Shahabaldine all ready to go. Tonight, we just have the the one application. It's the continuation of 40 Main Street LLC on on the 40 Main Street property. I did get a chance, and so it's the continuation of the public hearing. We left the public hearing open because we we need advice from the village council as well as the village board. Specifically, and we can go through this all again, is just that, you know, the legislative intent of the payment in lieu of parking waivers. When you look at the introductory documents, which was the mayor's introduction of the local law. And then when it was referred over to the standing boards, the planning board and the zoning board at the time to give opinion on the payment in lieu and parking method, payment in lieu of parking waiver method, you know, to process changes of use. They were clear that it was for these existing configurations, not for increased intense use. And as a way of processing the change of use applications that was, you know, frankly, more legitimate than saying, well, go get a lease from somebody five blocks away that says he's going to lease you five parking spaces in his driveway. And then you'll, you know, and everybody kind of knew it was kind of a fiction. So this was a way in 2010 that the current administration came up with a way to process these applications. So and that was that was brought to light. I you'll all recall, I think we were all the same board on Two Depot Square where they wanted to subdivide a bunch of apartments and create additional apartments, right? So it wasn't an existing configuration. It was more it was more residential units. I think they wanted to, I think they were going to six or six or seven, which, you know, it's two per unit, so 14 cars. All of Main Street can only support about 90 cars, you know, so it's a significant percentage. And it is also long term parking. The short term, the the parking waivers clearly anticipate in the B1, they're in the B1, and the B1 is just Main Street. And Main Street has always had a four hour parking limit on it, right, since, you know, for many, many years. So the the I think we were clear back then, and when we wrote the recommendation for the waivers. And when we watched, when we worked with the applicant and said, you really, you can't increase the commercial, the commercial impact, I'm sorry, the residential impacts, commercial is fine, right, because commercial, but commercial is understood to be short term shared parking, right? That it's basically a retail street. And the folks are coming to park and they're having, you know, they're grabbing lunch and they're going to a store and they're doing some shopping and picking up a card and going home and. So that that's kind of the the background of this of this of this attempt, you know, the legislative attempt, you know, in the code to address parking concerns in the village, right? Because obviously, we all know we have a very real parking problem that currently the parking committee is working, you know, working on the, you know, the village board is looking at the parking committee's recommendations, which so far, they say they the village board is committed as well as, you know, the new mayoral candidates are committed to implementing those recommendations from the parking committee, which is, you know, a metered Main Street and then residential parking permits on the side streets. So all of that, you know, every, all of this is in the backdrop of that. And let me just first say that, you know, I I think it's fantastic that, you know, somebody wants to invest in Main Street and and, you know, and and improve a building and even have, you know, these customers available. But the reality of the matter is, is that the planning board, you know, we are not, you know, a judicial body, we are just a, we are just, you know, we're a we're a board that interprets the code and and makes every effort to apply it fairly and evenly across the board when these applications come through. So i- in my opinion, the 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 planning board doesn't have a way to recommend these waivers because the waivers send the cars to Main Street, which has a parking limit of four hours. Right? You know, and and a work day would be, obviously, you know, the American workday is in excess of four hours, has been for a long time. So I think that, but I think, you know, I don't want to, I don't want that to be the end of the discussion. I think that, you know, we can look past our code, the but the planning board cannot look past the code. So I think what, you know, what we could do is, you know, say that we, you know, we understand the challenges this. We process the application, say, we can't recommend the waivers because the waivers, you know, are, it it appears to be an unintended consequence of legislation. But we send it to the village board and say, what do you what do you think, right? Do you have a way to look at this application, whether they could say? You know, as 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 James was telling us, you know, last week, or I'm sorry, not last week, at the last meeting, that, you know, there's the possibility of, you know, subsidizing or or paying for Metro North and encouraging public transportation. All that's great, and all that is is one solution to the problem. It's just that it's not in the code and there's no way to process it, you know, for the planning board to process an application and check all of our boxes, because that's what we do. We're not quite administrative, but we're, you know, there is some interpretation, but I think I I think the interpretation is quite clear as to what these payment move parking waivers are. So I think that to keep it moving, we need to, we need to process the application and then send it over. We need to get the attorney on board. You know, because we want to make sure that we're, you know, that we're doing all of our research and we're clear on things. He seems quite clear. There is a, there was a potential conflict because the owner of the property also uses the same firm for some corporate law work. I have no issue. I've waived that. The mayor just tonight, I pinged him again, and he waived that with the village attorney. So now the village attorney can jump back in, but unfortunately, it wasn't in time for this meeting. Because I just want to make sure that we're, you know, that we're, you know, we're following the code properly. John and I, John first, village attorney, has been, you know, thinks that this is, you know, that the reasoning is very sound and follows the code quite well. And, you know, and I had thought that we basically just don't recommend the waivers and, you know, and or we have this, you know, joint meeting. John felt that we could just process the application, but I think we still need a meeting with John. We need, first of all, we need to do a secret determination. We need to close the public hearing properly. So James or Tim, do you guys have any questions? Or any information you need from us, or?
Um, Tim, I don't know. Are you there off mute? I I have an item if you'd want to go first or let me go, whichever is up to you.
No, so so I mean, I guess the the goal is to close the public hearing and then to go on to the next step. Is that what I'm understanding?
Right, but to do that, we need, we need to have the village. I think we need to have the village attorney with us in in the next meeting. And then we'll take care of all that there. We we just want to make sure that we're not taking any missteps. You know, we were careful with the with the work that we do and want to make sure that folks are well are well treated and we're, you know, and we're following our code clearly. I think I think we are. But unfortunately, we couldn't have John at the last two meetings because of the potential conflict with the ownership and the law firm. I've waived that tonight. The the mayor just waived that, which is the more important one. And so the the village attorney is now comfortable to jump back in, but it wasn't in time for him to make the meeting tonight. So we'd have to just do another another meeting, but I think we could close everything up at that meeting. Jeff, have we gotten any more comment in, anything in writing, or? No, wow, interesting. I, you know, it's funny, I thought that they were going to be beating the drums about, you know, taking all the parking on Main Street, and we haven't gotten a single comment, which is great for your application. You know, because it's just, I would have expected that the merchants, you know, maybe there, maybe the interpretation is, you know, great, 44 more customers, or, you know, I don't really know. I would have expected. Typically, we're so used to, you know, having the parking discussion over and over and over in a million different ways. Because obviously, that's a big part of a, you know, of a site plan and and approving it. So. Alright, so we don't have any further public comment. I I think we could wrap everything up at the next meeting. I would just want to do one meeting with John, just to make sure that John's comfortable with everything that we're doing. And that we do everything in a public forum. And it's clear as to why we're making the decisions that we're making, because I don't, I don't think they're really in, well, without question, there are a little bit of interpretation of the code, but code is not, you know, as we explained to Two Depot Square, code isn't just the text in the code. It's the underlying introductory, you know, documentation that exists when legislation gets passed, as well as, you know, any other supporting documentation. And then there's the living, breathing piece of the code, which is what has been the past practice of applying the code. Right? And so this board was very clear when we, you know, when we were advising Two Depot Square that, you know, it's it's not for increasing impacts. This is an interesting application because, according to the code, the impacts for retail and office are the same. Right? You know, because it's one per 150. The challenge there, and I think where you then go to the supporting documentation, and this is really just to show all our cards, and I, you know, I welcome challenges, you know, even if they're of a legal nature, to make sure that we're on the right page, right? I think that we are, but you know, again, we're in, you know, it's this is something new for us. I don't think it was ever anticipated that there would be an intensive office use on Main Street, right? You know, because it's always kind of been a shopping district and it's not terribly accessible. You do have the, you know, one of the few buildings that has a large first floor that's fully accessible. Right? You know, most of them are on on grades, if not, you know, two, three feet of bluestone to scale first before you're up to up to the floor plate. You know, so it's a, it's a very different building. So and again, we, you know, certainly love that people are, you know, are giving the love and investments to these buildings and and making Main Street vibrant. So that's, that's what I've got. Do you do, does the board want any discussion or is anybody unclear on the board as to what the next steps are? Or do you have ideas that are different than what I've stated? You know, certainly, this is a a democracy. I'm just the chair.
I really, I agree that we need, we need to speak with council and connect with the the village board.
Okay, and I think that, you know, I think even if we can't do the meeting, the joint meeting may take some time, and I kind of feel like we can process this. John and I were kind of hashing this through John, the village attorney. And said, look, we we can really just kind of say, listen, we can't recommend the waivers because of these factors, right? But we are sending it over to the village board. And I think in that way, it's essentially the same thing. It's kind of a meeting through memo, right? If they want to have a meeting, that's great, but I don't want to hold the applicant up any longer. Part of it was the biggest piece was the conflict. We couldn't proceed because of the potential conflict between the law firm and the attorneys. Right. But to be clear, the attorney that works with the owner works on corporate matters that has nothing to do with the with the village or this property. And the good and the good thing that the value that I see with, you know, waiving the conflict is then we have the village attorney who is very familiar with our code and how we've applied that code in the many years that he's been counsel to the village. So I think that gives a consistency. So he was here for Two Depot Square when, you know, that was some, that was a, that was a potential precedent setting, you know, item where nobody had come to the planning board before and said they wanted to increase the impacts by by subdividing residential, right?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question. So in this process, I don't think that I've ever, I've ever in a situation where we're not, we're, we're recommending that the village board not approve the waiver. In my experience so far, it's just been that, okay, we review it, we make the recommendation to the village board, and then the village board takes our recommendation to proceed in the affirmative. And so in this, the if the processes that we we pass us to the village board recommending that they decline it or or saying that we cannot make a recommendation.
Can I, can I, can I interrupt you for one second? My my intention is not to say that we decline it, just say that we cannot recommend it.
Recommend it. Yep, understood.
It leaves them free to take their own action. We don't want to suggest, we don't want to suggest, to be clear, we do not want to suggest what their action should be. I would love that they could turn around, theoretically, totally hypothetical, we're not, none of this means anything, that they turn around and say, we've got some land over here. We can create a parking lot. Right? We'll leave that parking lot the same way that they did for the Hudson House to support business and support investment. And this, you know, and this, this, it's an opportunity for Main Streets, opportunity for this building. So, yeah, I would, I want to be clear, and that's the only reason I wanted to interrupt. I don't, we do not, I do not, we should direct them in any way and leave it completely neutral as to do you have, you know, how you ever, however they want to proceed with it.
Okay, yeah, and I guess I I just wanted to confirm that in that case, right, the village board still, you know, they have the the way this is written, they still have flexibility to, as, you know, to come up with solutions to make whatever arrangements.
You know, that's, and that's, that's the question for the attorney. I mean, they're a legislative body, right? They can pass laws, they can, you know, what what I don't want to get into is I don't want to get in a position where we're saying you direct us to do something that isn't in the code. That's, that's not productive.
Can I ask? So I just want to, I also want to kind of get clarity on how how this connects to the site plan. Or the, sorry, the
We could approve, we could approve the site plan ab- absent parking, right? And remember, parking isn't, you know, it's not like Food Town, right, where we're looking at the right spaces and the slots and how much are the lights going to take up? There is no parking, right? So the only option here on the B1.
Yeah.
Exactly. In the B1, the only option is a calculation based on one per 150, which comes out to 44 spaces. We can send that over to them and say, listen, the the project requires 44 spaces. It's Main Street. They get grandfathered ones, so we're down to 43, not not material. But normally, the one matters, but this is a different, it's a different use. And then just say, absent, you know, absent meeting the parking requirement, you know, it's a valid site plan, you know, that it basically, you know, I mean, we don't, I don't, I don't have any issue.
Would would be formally approve it pending resolution of the part of parking? Is that how we would?
That, that I think we would ask, that that's the kind of stuff I'd want to ask John, is how do you paper this? How do you, how do you correctly paper this when you talk about, what does an approval mean? Certainly, we have approvals with with conditions, right? You know, off, we often approve things with conditions. Everything gets approved with the, you know, your escrow has to be current and you've got a, you know, whatever. So and we do conditions where, you know, we want you to change this, you need to change that, show it this. And it's conditionally approved. So, yeah, I mean, the condition could be that if the village board has a solution for parking, the planning board, I I think it's important for the planning board to do just that, to plan, right? If we were to say, we recommend these parking waivers and we send them to a street where they can't park, and then they overflow onto residential streets, right, which are soon, we understand to have residential permits, right? That's the op, that's the opposite of planning. That's kind of turning a blind eye to a problem that needs to be planned to. The village board has the ability to do different things, right? I don't know what those things are. But I think that's one of the big questions in processing this application is, how do we write the resolution if we were to approve, right? To just say, or maybe, you know, no, we wouldn't, I take that back. We would not approve. We would, we would ask, we would ask, I think what we would do is ask the village board if they see an avenue to address the parking issue. And should they have an avenue to address it, to send it back to us for approval?
Okay.
I think, I think that's really the way to do it. Right? Okay, everybody agree?
That makes sense to me, too. That that was going to be my question was whether it was going to get referred back, which I think is important, an important piece. Basically, the parking table doesn't apply because of what you introduced at the beginning, which is the fact that this program of business would require a full day parking, and that's not even available. So the waiver chart doesn't really apply to this business or this application. And then therefore, yeah.
Good, yeah. And yeah, so that's why, and I'm kind of thinking it as we go, although I do remember thinking this car the way home, is that we wouldn't approve. We would say, you know, subject, you know, to your, you know, to your solving the planning, you know, the parking issue to the planning board satisfaction, right? Because our job is to plan, right? Not to look the other way and not to, you know, send a bunch of cars to Main Street. You know, because otherwise, what are we here for, right? So.
Oh, guys, James here. I just wanted to see, I'm I'm trying to, trying to gauge if it it sounds like we're listening in on your process and 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 we appreciate that. It is complicated. When we wrapped with the call last month, last week, I can't recall, it was a while ago, it was raining really hard. It gave us a lot of thoughts and we think we came up with an interesting solution. And we were prepared to present that solution here. But now we're not sure if this isn't the place to present it, because it sounds like it may be going to a different place first and then coming back, but wanted to share with you that we had built a a deck that outlines a solution and and wanted to at least let you know we had that. So if you wanted to look at it, we could share it or just hold off on it, but.
No, we might as well take a look at a slide deck or a parking deck.
A slide deck, a slide deck.
Okay, sure. Let's look at that.
Okay, awesome. And it will, it's pretty concise and
Could go vertical. The HDRB would love it.
Yeah, let me work my the presentation skills here. I have to figure out on Zoom how to present, so just, you guys.
Yeah, because certainly, we're all in this together. I mean, you know, you know, I mean, it, we want to apply the code, but we also want to make sure that we can, you know, get folks, you know, some sort of a predictable outcome. This one's just a little, unfortunately, it's a, it's kind of an outlier and new.
Is this parking on the roof?
Not that creative, but but Stephanie, actually, a lot of, a lot of this is a real derivative of one of your questions, which was how how, think about how this is going to look during the day. And with that, we were like, you know, that doesn't make sense, but here's a way it could make sense. How would it look during the day? I can't quote it verbatim, Stephanie, what you said, but it was something around, you know, like, think about 8:00 AM on Monday morning, how is this going to look, right? And then we're like, okay, now we got to frame a reference. And then it was kind of like, oh, this made sense. Well, let's see if it makes sense to you guys, because that's really what's important. I'm trying to present. Matt, is that?
Hey, Jeff, can you, can you let James share?
It says host disabled, so I'm still waiting. So that means, I guess, I can present.
Hang on, Jeff, Jeff's still muted.
Sorry about that. I should be able to share. I said, said it so that you can't share.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Let me, now I have to make sure that my computer will let me share, so. How's my visual? Did I, did I get the screen up?
Yes. That looks good at 8:00 AM.
It's a sunny day.
Yeah, this one's funny. I just noticed something. We put this deck together. We're really having a fun time doing it. And this is a screenshot off of a Zillow, you know, how they do all the Zillows, right? So check this out, guys. You think you get a kick out of this? We just picked this up about 10 minutes ago. So you you see up here this leaf?
Yeah.
All right. Oops, I mean, yeah. Okay, so this is a photo from back in the 50s, right?
Wow, that's a great parking scheme. I think you should go with that.
Right? But notice this whole
There's three spots.
There's three spots. They photoshopped the the commercial thing on Zillow. They put a a little branch in front of this.
How funny. Oh, why would they want to cover that up? It looks great.
I know, right? And I'm sure these were blue skies during that day. It wasn't a great day.
Oh, that's really funny.
Yeah, so some shots we got, but this one, I thought you guys just might enjoy it, because it was pretty. This was, this was on Joe Padilla's iPhone. We were walking and talking, and he's like, wait, I think I got this photo. So it must have been 1960 for this election. The Ford Oval hanging out there, and then he told me this used to be the post office, but
Yep, it was. Until kind of recently, too, I think.
Yeah, it wasn't that long, yeah.
So yes, the parking problem on Main Street has been here since at least the 1960s. This car is quirkin' right on the sidewalk. I'm, if if you'll indulge me, I'll just walk through this. It's a little bit salesy, but the net is, here's a spoiler alert. We think we can use Fair Street, right? We think we can use Fair Street and leverage the Fair Street parking lot that's underutilized during the week. That was
Yeah, municipal. I think that's, I think that's a great solution. And when I talked about, you know, there's land, there, you know, that parking lot already exists, you know? There's also the highway garage, which is just behind that. Not a whole lot of available land, but things could change. So.
Cool. I'm going to go into sales mode here, so.
Yeah, bring it, bring it.
I'm bringing it. All right. So, you know, as I said, just in just kind of my narrative when we were talking casually during the the public, the public part of this, the goal is to build this win. Because we've been around a while, we want to make it work. It has to win for everybody. And, you know, one of the key pieces that we saw was keeping the village the way the village is. It's a challenge, right? Because things want to change in the world, but we want to keep them what they are in lots of ways to keep it special. So we do believe we can pull this together by doing it with this space. We found some economic stimulus, which should be interesting to everybody in the community, which is directly related to us creating jobs and then those people going out during lunch, breakfast, having their coffees and so on and so forth. But we also figured out a way to get revenue to the municipality, to the village, without having to pay for it, which is always, you know, everyone's dream, right? Don't have to lay out money and then receive it, but it does indirectly comes from the already installed parking meters and
Parking net.
Yeah. All right, so here's my selling of us. I mean, about 10 years ago, these kids, I can't lift them either. They're 13 and 11 now. But like I said earlier, we've been around a while. Reason we got here, Serena, my wife's, lots of friends from school around here. And then we just came back once we decided to execute this plan of having a family, and it it worked out. All right, so now talk about Main Street and the plan, right? It's retail in the front. And then the office in the back, right? So the private office is off Main Street. It's not storefront. Again, maintaining this community feel, not having this office look and office workers going in allows the frontage to maintain the the retail look.
Right.
Recap in the business type. This is a financial services business, office workers. I know the plans have a lot of people on it because of the seats, but it's really designed to be maxed out about 20 people. And this is really because of the way the world is now. People aren't coming in Monday through Friday. We've never been that type of office. We've been remote work pre pandemic, but having about 20 people in there, so it's not 40, 50 people. I think this is really important, what we're not. Taking some of the comments from the public forum, we're not noisy, right? We're not loud restaurant, we're not smelly, we're not doing a brewery, we're going to have hops, you know, wafting across the village. And it's certainly not dirty, because we're not industrial. And we're not late night, right? It's Monday through Friday. So I think that's positive, because the character of the village doesn't change it relatively. I think people would know what was going on. Actually, they would just see a little more foot traffic and more people out at lunch, but not see any evidence of people in this office. And we're not big, so it's not like HSBC coming in with 1,500 people. We're 20 people. High earning jobs, these people are in the village spending money. I think it's kind of a nifty thing. Love to hire people from the village, right? People from Phillips Town. A lot of people, I think I'm the only one in Phillips Town that works at the company, but that could certainly change, which is a nice positive. This is a big piece. The number's right. Couple ways to drive revenue into the villages. The businesses are going to benefit. Coffee, breakfast, bagels, I get that, but also people staying overnight, if we have people come in from out of town to the the B and Bs or us having, you know, Christmas parties or outings in the village equate out to that. But calculating about 120 and and revenue to the village for the parking, and I'll go into those numbers. This one's interesting. Thought about this a little bit later. We're actually creating less parking issues and here's how. There's a negative effect. If we don't put in another retailer restaurant in there, Saturday and Sunday, Monday through Friday, those aren't people with vehicles coming into town looking for parking. So.
But you would still have the two retail, the two small storefronts on either side, right?
Yeah, yeah, they're, but they're, you know, they're nine hundred square feet combined. They're four fifty each. They're, they're pretty small. They're pop ups.
Understood.
But not a, you know, fifty person, fifty table, hundred and fifty person restaurant. I mean, it could easily support a big restaurant back there, but not looking to do that. So should drive less parking issues over the week and. This is key piece to the whole thing. It's like, we're in an inverse relationship, right? Forty Main Street needs the parking when the town doesn't. Inverse, you have a big surge. We're not there during the week. We are. It's a Monday through Thursday. Long term, that's a pretty big deal, right? Those spots are four hour slots on Main Street. Is that right? Do I get that right? They're four hours spots?
Yeah.
Correct.
Right. So, you know, there's a disincentive. If you're going to work nine to five, you're going to park on Main Street and then go move. It, it doesn't really work. So it's, it's again, not a place that they'll be able to park unless they had to move. But of course we have the municipal lot solution. So just to an addressing of a question that might come up. Would someone just occupy the space? And I think the reality is, is they wouldn't because they'd have to move it anyway. It's just not what they would be doing during the day. We're summer hours. Don't work on Fridays. Again, the inverse relationship. Not there when everybody's coming in to go hike and see the leaves. And it's offsite from Main Street.
But it's not much of a walk from the Fair Street parking lot.
Right. Here's our fair street. Again, Stephanie, I was like, you know what? There's got to be a solution. Forty four spots. It's right there, ready to grow, go. And by the way, this has got to be the parking space, the parking with the best view in the Hudson Valley.
Oh, I know. You want to be a car, like working.
Right? There's trains going by and I'm just like, it's pretty, pretty nutty. I mean, of course I've been in Riverview, you know, a billion times and I never really thought about the view from the parking lot.
Or the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah.
My fancy time studies, me and my son, when I pick them up, we would write down on a notepad, the lot's pretty empty. I'm not saying we did an exhaustive, like, you know, one year long. You know, data set and sample size, but I think you guys kind of can feel that it's, it's just not used very.
And the village, and the village board have that actual data because of the metered park. So they'll have true data.
Yeah, like you were saying, it's just, it's a quick walk.
Yeah.
And these are, these are people that are, you know, from the city. They're, they're, they're custom walking four blocks.
Yeah, you, you want to go to the garage that has the best rates, so you could be walking a while.
Here it is mapped out. Seven minutes. I walked it in six. So, hey, I'm a quick walker, I guess. Here's this financial model. I'm hoping this gets this people excited. Three bucks per hour is the rate on the lot. Twenty people all year. We're looking to pay for the parking as an incentive to help make sure that they're parking in that lot. Easy for us as a perk, right? But reality is they've never had to pay for parking before. If we were in the city, we'd be paying for parking. Now we're in the village, we pay for parking.
The rates are better.
They are a lot better, that's for sure. I said, I think I said this three or four times. I'll say it five times. The village doesn't have to come up with any cash to make this work. So there's no, you know, public discourse around use of the funds from, you know, we can send it other places. We don't need to build it out. Parking lots built, meters are in place. And then just back to a summary page, but I think you guys.
No, I think this is very good. Yeah. And that's, this is exactly what I'm thinking of is that the village has the ability to look at these solutions. I think the municipal lot is the obvious answer. There's also village land, whether or not it's a parking lot, but you're right. If you're willing to pay as opposed to lease a lot and go through a lease. But I, I, I think it's, it's an easy solution up to the village board as to, you know, what they would want to do. But I think that, you know, I think that's, you know, it's definitely the kind of thing that they need to look at. So I think it's a, it's a, it's a good presentation. I think that it, that it's very helpful for them in understanding it.
Well, thanks for letting me share with you. And you guys are involved and invested in this. You're stakeholders too. So I wanted to make sure that you guys saw it and it didn't, you know, not get presented here first.
No, no, I appreciate that. And I agree. I really do think that that the application does support village character for the very reasons that you say is that the office is fairly low traffic. It exists in the back. Our comprehensive plan wants to maintain storefronts, you know, so there is still an engagement between the building and the street, you know, not, you know, shuttered off and an office in the back, right? Where you put curtains across the front and, you know, and just pop up an office. This is, it is, it's really well aligned to what the goals of the village are and the village character, right? So I think that in my mind, the, the only open question is parking. And that's why I think it's the village board that has to say, okay, here, we'll do it this way, right? And if they were then to say, we will accept this, their use of the municipal lot as meeting the parking requirement, they can send it back to us. And we can say, fine, we don't have any site plan issues, right? And I think that's why we kind of walked through those scenarios with John, the village attorney. And I would, I would suspect that there's a way that we can kind of figure out how to, how to paper this approval and write the resolution and say, you know, for these reasons, this is why we are, you know, we're doing what we're doing. We, and we had to, we had to put quite a few reasons down for Two Depot Square to say, you know, why we're not recommending waivers for the, for the expansion of a residential, of residential use. But, but like you said, this is, you, you, you know, assuming that the village board buys into this and, and I think it's a reasonable solution because, and the good news is the village board, especially Maria Early. And we've only got her for a short while. God help us. You know, she, she'll have all this data for the parking meters and she could just pull that and and she can tell us exactly how used it is. I, I suspect the data will support exactly what you're saying, that it's highly underutilized. Right? And if you can get, you know, get a customer that's willing to pay daily and Monday through Thursday, you've got, you know, you've got customers lined up. It's a, it's, it's really in some ways, it's a, it's revenue that you can book as opposed to kind of, you know, just a question mark as to, you know, I do know that they sometimes open up that municipal lot for winter parking, but, you know, to the residents, but you, you know, because unfortunately we also have snow bands, right? So the people that don't have off street parking have to then figure out where to put their car. So that, those are the kind of things that the village board is going to have to look at and say, what are we, you know? What, what, what's the net effect of this, right?
Yeah.
Springbrook obviously used to use that lot for free before they metered it. Springbrook was a condominium development that was approved with one parking space per unit, which it's not really the way people live, probably not even back in the sixties and certainly not today. That, you know, if there are two of you there, typically you have your own car. So that, you know, that would send some, you know, folks over there too. And then obviously then it became a paid solution. So the village board can take all that into account, but I think, I think the presentation is great. I think it's, you know, it's compelling. It's clear. And will help the village board kind of understand what you're trying to do. And then we can, we can go through it with John, the village attorney next, you know, in two weeks. And then, and then just, and then come up with our, with our recommendations and then send it over to the village board.
Okay. I, I have a quick question. Is there any, is there any sort of incentive to request or any way that the applicant can request that data regarding the municipal lot earlier?
Yeah, I think you could. Yeah, you can just fill it, call the clerk. He's, he's on the, you know, don't call him now. Busy now.
I will ask, I will ask Marie on Monday. I'll send her an email asking her to pull that together.
Thank you.
Yeah, she would know the, the vacancy rate, you know, from Monday through Thursday. You guys are Monday through Thursday, right, James?
Yeah, Monday through Thursday.
I didn't think it was just Monday through Tuesday. Or I'd be applying tomorrow.
Yeah, me too. If we could figure out how to do that, wow, that'd be fantastic.
All right. Very good. Does the board have any other questions or?
No, I, I guess, I guess just want to confirm, we'll meet with the attorney in two weeks. And then two, and then we'll, from there, we'll refer this.
Yeah. So we'll, we, we are holding, we're holding the hearing and the comment open for, you know, till the next two weeks. We'll extend out to that. We'll have the village attorney. He just got the waiver from the mayor late tonight, just before the meeting. So we can then have the village attorney with, present with us. We can go through all of this, you know, do a secret determination, which I imagine is type two, but I'm not sure because of the parking impacts, because that's an environmental impact. Right? So we should, we'll have to talk about, we'll, we'll work through that at that meeting. We'll declare seeker and but we'll, you know, determine seeker, make a recommend, make a classification for seeker and then click, figure out the determination on that classification.
One, one member of the board mentioned site plan approval in absence of parking. Question, I'll, I'll, I'll present to the board my, my challenge. We've been unable to do anything with the building of, you know, even electrical or anything inside. Because we're waiting for other pieces and parking. Is there a, a possibility of unlocking it so that we could start to move some of the other pieces forward? I, I just don't understand protocol and process.
Certainly, I certainly, the problem, the, the problem is just that is, is one of expectation, right? Is just that, you know, the, you know, the work, the work gets ahead of the approvals, right? And then you're, you're investing in an office and then not approved for an office. If you feel that there, you know, and that's not a good solution for anybody, right? And let's not, you know, we're not suggesting that's where we end up, that, that's where certainly where neither of us want to end up. So, but certainly to do things like, you know, like electric rough and utilities and stuff that, you know, are for a building that regardless of its use, you need to do anyway.
Yeah.
Let me, I'll talk to the building, to the code enforcement officer and just see what her thoughts are. It's funny, we, you know, we've you, you, you've demoed the building though, right? You've demoed the interior?
Yeah, the, the interior is a shell. There's, there's nothing in it. There's one outlet sitting on a wall. But there wasn't, there wasn't much in the, in the space, if you guys recall.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right, right. So, so I guess to your point is like, whatever it is, if it, if it becomes an ice skating rink or a restaurant or, you know, a pop up, what have you, we would still need those things regardless of if we prevailed or if there were expectations that didn't get met. So that's kind of what I was hoping to see if there was a way to just be.
Yeah, let me, I, I think that's a completely reasonable request, you know, to kind of say, can we at least do kind of, you know, electric and HVAC rough and all this stuff that is needed for just the ma, you know, just the, the ma, you know, the major mechanicals of any building for any use. Right? Because I'm sure that stuff is all outdated, if not worse. So yeah, let me talk to her tomorrow and then I'll, I'll shoot it. I'll have her shoot an email out.
Thank you.
Ask her what she can do.
Yeah, super helpful. Thanks. And very appreciative of the thought to let that be considered.
Absolutely. And again, you know, the only, the only hesitancy is just, is one of really expectation that, okay, this will proceed. It will go forward as an office. You know, and then you're doing, you know, you're chopping the floors and you're doing floor chops and electric stub ups for furniture that isn't coming. And you've spent, you know, tens of thousands of dollars, you know, laying in, you know, dog houses and floor boxes for, you know, the desks that aren't going to lay on top of them. But certainly for, you know, you know, the new sub panels, the new service to bring it in and, you know, and, you know, and, and general distribution of the mechanicals. I think that would be completely reasonable to say, just get started. It certainly, and it makes a safer space, right? Because you're, you're looking at issues that probably have not been properly looked at in decades.
That's right.
So it's, it's, it's a win-win. So, and we, we love those. So. All right. Let me, um, let me talk to Charlotte tomorrow and then I'll ask her what she can do and she'll reach out to you. Or is she working with Tim or?
I can, I can reach out to her after you, I'll give her a day and then.
Very good. Yeah, I don't, actually, I, I should ask, actually, what, what Charlotte scheduled, Jeff?
She's in on Saturday.
Okay. So speak to her on Saturday. Sorry, not tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely happy to help. Okay. Anybody else see anything else?
No, I think that's good. So do we need a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, well, we have no comment from the public. So I guess we have a motion to adjourn because we know public.
Public? Anybody from public?
Okay. Motion to adjourn. Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks so much. Have a good night. All right. Bye now.
Bye.